We're going to give it another minute. Okay. Oh. Speak of the devil, here I am, I'll let in this next couple folks and then we'll get started. Okay, it looks like the remaining guests that were in the waiting room have now been admitted to the meeting. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting on this windy May 25th. I do have 7:31 on my clock in this meeting of the city council is hereby called to order. At this time, I ask that you remain muted, but still join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And with the pledge completed, would the members of the city council please unmute your microphones in preparation for the clerk to call roll? And with that, we'll give the clerk a moment here so that the clerk can call roll.
Mikhail.
Here.
Budmats.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Viniziano.
Here.
Passessi.
Here.
Reyes. She not here?
Let me look at the the lists here. I don't see her. No, not yet.
Okay, Soneka, here. Thank you.
With six present and one absent at this time, we still do have a quorum this evening. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel as well as other media outlets. Couple of quick housekeeping items that we go over every meeting. The first is that public comment will be afforded to the public who are joining us on the conference line, so long as you've provided your contact credentials and the subject matter for which you'd like to address before the deadline, which is noted on tonight's agenda. Also, members of the public who are present at city council chambers listening to this meeting will also be afforded the opportunity to provide public comment in accordance with the procedures that are applicable at an in-person meeting of the city council. Namely, those members must have signed in before the start of the meeting on the sign-in sheet. Written comments that were submitted prior to the meeting will also be read aloud. As we move on in the agenda, the first order of business is to approve minutes from a previous meeting. And with that, we have one set of minutes, it's from the May 11th city council meeting. Is there by show of hand a motion to approve these minutes? Thank you, Alderman Soneka, and thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to this set of minutes by show of hand? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Okay, the first name is Reyes, but she's not here yet. Soneka.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Viniziano.
Yes.
Passessi.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the minutes are approved. As we don't have anything to deviate for tonight, we'll move on with the mayor's report. I just have three quick items. The first item is to mention last week's May 18th, second round of vaccine for Rolling Meadows residents and anyone else who needed two doses of the COVID-19 vaccine. I want to thank everybody again who volunteered their time or provided some sort of material or service for us making this event possible. It went smoothly, just like the first time on April 27th. And also that we have Memorial Day coming up this weekend on Monday. But please join us for the parade on Saturday as well as the city market, where I know myself and other council members will be as well as in the parade on that Saturday. Are there any ward reports this evening? Okay. Saying no further ward reports, oh, Alderman Budmats.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received several calls about the closure or proposed closure of the Chase Bank and residents asking if the city can do anything to to preserve the relationship that Chase has in in Rolling Meadows. So I know that some staff, I had had discussions informally with some staff about the Chase Bank leaving. And so I'm just curious if if there's any, any report from staff or if there's anything that we can report to the citizens about the Chase Bank leaving on Kirchhoff. And then the second thing is, is I did receive a call from a resident about going west on, for the traffic committee, going west on Kirchhoff, just past Hicks, where a number of residents from the Brookwood Conduct Medium Association turned left immediately after the median. And it creates, in this citizen's opinion, creates a danger because just as people are starting to go through the intersection, then they're forced to stop because somebody's making a left-hand turn immediately after exiting the intersection. So wondering if the traffic committee thinks it's necessary to either extend the median strip or to put a no left-hand turn sign into the Brookwood driveway because they're presently crossing over like solid yellow lines to do this. So those are the, those are the items for my report, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. We will, uh, let's go ahead and revisit these two questions on matters not on the agenda and propose them to staff in order for dialogue and feedbacks so that way members of the council can respond to residents when they do have these questions about Chase Bank. And then you can get back to those residents about the traffic committee's feedback. I also want to note before I continue on here that Alderman Reyes has joined the meeting. And I do see Alderman Viniziano, your hand is up for ward reports, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in light of since our last city council meeting, we have had, I believe, two more traffic accidents off of Kirchhoff and New Wilkie Road. And so I did speak to Chief Nowacki, and so matters not on the agenda. He will be giving us an update on some of more information that came forward. We did, I did obviously receive several phone calls and emails. That was already on the forefront of people's concerns and minds. So with more accidents, I did reach out to chief and we'll get more information matters not on the agenda. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you, Alderman Viniziano. I appreciate that. If there aren't any other ward reports, then I will go ahead and continue on with the segment here for the opportunity for public comment for the next 20 minutes. I do have one signature on tonight's sign-in sheet. And prior to enabling and opening the floor for these comments, I just want to go over a couple of ground rules for anyone who does wish to speak per the, per the rules and procedures of public addressing the city council. We want to make sure that we attain the objectives following the rules of conduct and want to make sure that each person addressing the city council shall state their name for the record and that each person shall be granted no more than five minutes of the allotted 20 minutes in order to address the city council. And lastly, profanity shall not be used in any form or manner. With that, if we do have Megan Knight on the line, the floor is yours. Megan's here from District 214, representing item C. Megan, if you're on, the floor is yours.
Thank you for having me this evening. I am Megan Knight, I'm the Director of Academic Programs and Pathways in Township High School District 214. I'm here to represent the district this evening regarding item C. We're very grateful for the consideration of the city with regard to our, our proposal to utilize 3,500 Bluebird Lane as a training facility for our practical architecture and construction program. And I'm happy to answer any questions that people have this evening.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you for sharing that, thank you for being available if any questions do come up. Moving on for the items pending, we have one item, line item A, ordinance number 21-28 at this time to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Is there by show of hand a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Soneka, thank you, Alderman Mikhail for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Soneka.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Viniziano.
Yes.
Passessi.
Yes.
Reyes. I don't see her anymore.
I wonder if she's having connectivity issues due to the wind. I, she's no longer on the participant list either. She did join, so, you know, she's being admitted right now, she's coming back in the meeting. So we'll see, give it a second here.
Okay.
Alderman Reyes, are you, are you able to join? Have you gotten back on? Maybe muted right now, though.
There she is.
All right, so is the audio working, Alderman Reyes?
I'm here.
All right. So we will, just to fill you in, we were going over the ordinance, ordinance extending and confirming the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And we were calling roll, and you, you are up for a vote on that.
Reyes.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance is adopted. This now brings us to the consent ordinances in for first reading. It consists of two items, those items are B and C. Does any alderman wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for ordinances by show of hand? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr., just item B, please, for question or clarification.
Okay, then we will just go ahead and take each of these individually as a result of there only being two at this time. So we'll begin with line item B, it's ordinance number 21-00 is to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Is there a motion to, is there a motion to move this forward for second reading? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, thank you, Alderman Viniziano for the second. Alderman O'Brien, this is the one you selected, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm assuming discussion is yours?
Thank you, thank you. And I don't know if this is more for Attorney Wolf or manager Crumstock is with everything in the news recently about potentially the state, state of emergency ending on either the 11th or I saw some press coverage today, the 17th. I just want to clarify, like, I believe our work has been done as the city in terms of recouping the money that was potentially or in the process of for the American Recovery Act or any state or federal funding. I know we had to have rightfully so a special meeting to call the declaration of an emergency for the city of Rolling Meadows in March of last year. I don't know if there's wording we can put in this where it would just sunset. I believe Alderman Budmats brought this up several meetings ago. Could we just sunset at the same time the state's ends? Or would we have to call a special meeting if we approve it on the eighth for extending it? But then it's over on the 11th. I just don't know if it's a protocol or process item.
I can address that issue, Alderman O'Brien, and thank you for asking that question. I believe the, the way the ordinance is written is that it is valid until for, until the next meeting or until the state of emergency is over, as declared by the state. So that language is, should already be in there. As, as you know, these matters continue to be addressed by the governor on a 30-day basis. So it's probably prudent to move this ordinance for first reading in the event the governor does proclaim an extended state of emergency. At that time, we can pass it for second reading. But if, if at the time of second reading, the state of emergency no longer exists, there'll be no reason to take action on the ordinance at that time.
Great, or if we do take action at that time on the eighth and it sunsets on the 11th from a state perspective, since the ordinance is drafted that way, ours will just send two, correct?
Correct, and I'll verify that that language is in there.
Great, thank you, that's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Attorney Wolf.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion on this item? Okay. Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Viniziano.
Yes.
Passessi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Soneka.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance will be moved forward for a second reading. Next up is line item C, ordinance number 21-00, approve a temporary special use pursuant to section 122-233.3 of the Code of Ordinances in the city of Rolling Meadows, Illinois, to allow school use in an existing single-family home in an R3 zoning district as training facility for construction trades, subject to conditions on the property commonly known as 3,500 Bluebird Lane. Is there a motion to move this forward for second reading? Thank you, Alderman Soneka for the first, thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there by show of hand any discussion on this item? Alderman Soneka.
Sorry, that was just, um, remaining.
No worries, thank you. With no discussion, then the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Viniziano.
Yes.
Passessi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Soneka.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes, did you know?
No, thank you. That makes solid seven in favor and then opposed. So this ordinance will be moved forward for second reading. Let me get both screens here on the same page, which will bring us now to a new business, which is a motion to approve the payment of bills on warrant for May 25th, 2021. Is there by show of hand a motion to approve the warrant? Thank you, Alderman Soneka, thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion for the payment of bills on warrant? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? And will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Viniziano.
Yes.
Passessi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Soneka. Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. Well, this brings us to the next item on the agenda, and it's the consent resolutions. This consists of four items, those items are E through H. Does any alderman by show of hand wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for resolutions? Seeing none, the chair declares it an order for one motion to consider the four resolutions in a single motion without debate. Is there such a motion? Thank you, Alderman Soneka, thank you, Alderman Mikhail for the second. First one up here, line item E, resolution number 21-r-46 to authorize the purchase of asphalt for the fiscal year 2021. Line item F, resolution number 21-r-47 is to award construction contract related to the Sunset Brookview sanitary sewer improvements for phase one. Line item G, resolution number 21-r-48 is to award a professional engineering contract for construction observation and related engineering services for the proposed Sunset Brookview sanitary sewer improvements, also for phase one. And then lastly, line item H, resolution number 21-r-49 is to award a multi-year contract providing forestry maintenance services for fiscal year 2021 through fiscal year 2023. The question is, shall the four resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Viniziano.
Yes.
Passessi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Soneka.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
That makes seven in favor and nobody opposed, so those resolutions are adopted. This brings the council now to other business and reports. Go ahead and make sure the other monitor is in the same place. And as you can see, there are appointments this evening. There are four committees and six appointments or reappointments. The first up is for the Capital Projects Committee. This one is for an appointment of Alderman Budmats to take the place of previous six-word alderman. And for this, I would look for a motion by show of hand to approve his appointment. Thank you, Alderman Soneka, thank you, Alderman Viniziano for the second. Is there any discussion on Alderman Budmats' appointment to the Capital Projects Committee? Seeing none, the question is, shall Alderman Budmats be appointed to the Capital Projects Committee? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Passessi.
Yeah.
Reyes.
Yes.
Soneka.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yeah.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Viniziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and then opposed, Alderman Budmats' appointment is confirmed. Moving on to the next committee, the Fire and Police Commission. It's a reappointment for Ted Loesch. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve Mr. Loesch's reappointment. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, and thank you, Alderman Mikhail for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, will Ted Loesch be reappointed to the Fire and Police Commission? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Soneka.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Viniziano.
Yes.
Passessi.
Yes.
With seven in favor and then opposed, Mr. Loesch is reappointed to the Police and Fire Commission. The next is the Veterans Committee, and there are three individuals, two of them are reappointments, and the third is a new appointment. Let's start with Chuck Orne as a reappointment. Is there a motion to approve Mr. Orne's reappointment to the Veterans Committee? Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Viniziano for that second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall Chuck Orne be reappointed to the Veterans Committee? Will the clerk please call the rolls?
Soneka. Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Viniziano.
Yes.
Passessi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, Mr. Orne is reappointed to the Veterans Committee. This brings us to the next reappointment, Mr. Ron Wyler. Is there a motion to approve his reappointment? Thank you, Alderman Mikhail for the first, and Alderman Viniziano for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, Ron Wyler being reappointed to the Veterans Committee. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Yano.
Yes.
Passessi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Soneka.
Yes.
With seven in favor and then opposed, Mr. Wyler is reappointed. Last on the Veterans Committee is Dana Betzner, and this is her first round on the committee. Is there a motion to approve her appointment? Thank you, Alderman Mikhail, thank you for the second, Alderman O'Brien. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, will Ms. Betzner be appointed to the Veterans Committee? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Viniziano.
Yes.
Passessi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Soneka.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
With seven in favor and then opposed, Ms. Betzner is appointed. This brings us to the last committee and the last appointment for this evening. It's the Rolling Meadows Environmental Committee. And Mr. Dr. Michael Kohler being appointed to this committee. Is there a motion by show of hand to approve Dr. Kohler's appointment? Thank you, Alderman Soneka for the first, and Alderman Mikhail for the second on this. Is there any discussion on Dr. Kohler's appointment? Seeing none, will the clerk please call roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Viniziano.
Yes.
Passessi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Soneka.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, Dr. Kohler is appointed to the Rolling Meadows Environmental Committee. And that concludes our appointments and reappointments for this evening. As you'll note, there are no proclamations this evening from the mayor. Are there any reports from the city clerk?
No, not tonight.
Thank you. This will now bring us to city staff reports. Just a reminder, there are no discussions on the city staff reports. The first item up is the community items of interest. And for this, manager Crumstock, when you're ready, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I do have a few add-ons from what's in front of you at this point in time. But we do want to remind people, even though it's raining outside my window, that the sprinkler restrictions are set to begin and are in place at this point in time as of May 15th to conserve water throughout the committee. Lawn sprinkling is prohibited between noon and 6:00 PM daily on consecutive days. We do want to mention that the next scheduled blood drive with Vitalant is set for Thursday, June 24th, between one and seven P M. here in the council chambers at City Hall. Due to need to social distancing, which we are still following, and appointments are really needed for this because of masks and face coverings at the time that we're still scheduling this, please contact Vitale at eight seven seven two five eight four eight two five. We do have future blood drives that are scheduled for the twenty twenty one, and they consist of August twenty sixth, October twenty eighth, and December twenty third. We do want to thank everybody who attended the Rolling Meadows Garden Club Plant and Craft Cell that was held on Saturday, May fifteenth, after the one-year hiatus due to COVID nineteen concerns. We do want to mention, like Mayor Gallo did mention, that Saturday, May twenty ninth, the city market, the first one of the season, will be conducted. That's from ten A M. to two P M. At Community Church, twenty seven twenty Kirchhoff Road. We also are doing our annual Memorial Day and Parade and Ceremony on Saturday, May twenty ninth. The parade starts at eleven A M. It's a very small parade on Kirchhoff Road. It's really based for the ceremony that takes place at eleven thirty in the afternoon. Obviously, we have about two and a half years' worth of names to read for veterans who passed away in Rolling Meadows. So it'll be a little bit longer than usual, but again, we hope that everybody does come out for Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony, and please observe social distancing and masks if you can. June eleventh is the annual Black Party that will be conducted on Central Road, Barker Avenue to Jay Lane, from four thirty P M. to eight thirty P M. Be prepared for road closures. Jet Set Four Chicago is Latin band. They will be playing from four thirty to five thirty P M., and then American English, which is a Beatles tribute band, will be playing from six thirty to eight thirty P M. We do want to mention that the first scheduled Friday Rock and Roll in the Meadows is for Friday, June eighteenth. The event will take place between seven P M. and ten P M. on Kimball Hill Park, thirty six, twenty, thirty-two sixty-six Kirchhoff Road. Music will be provided by the musical group High Infidelity, which is an eighty cover band. We do want to mention again, just a friendly reminder that in the state of Illinois, we have what's called Scott's Law, and it's also known as the Move Over Law. This regulation mandates that when approaching any police or emergency vehicle stopped along the roadway, you must proceed with due caution, change lanes if possible, and reduce your speed. Please do your part and keep our first responders safe. Scott's Law is named after Chicago Fire Lieutenant Scott Gallion, who was struck and killed on December twenty third, two thousand, while assisting an accident scene. We do want to reiterate, please shop, dine, and order in Rolling Meadows is more important than ever. Even though COVID nineteen restrictions are slowly being removed, it really is important to visit and remember our big boxes, our restaurants, and our small businesses throughout the area. Obviously, one item that I wanted to add before we get into the June main committee meetings is that a flag retirement ceremony will be conducted by the Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts on Monday, June fourteenth, at seven P M. at the Kimball Hill Fire Pit. You can drop off old or torn or items that are not in repair mode of American flags or any kind of flag if you would like it disposed of correctly here at City Hall, and we'll make sure that it gets to the flag retirement ceremony. And again, that is on Monday, June fourteenth, at seven P M. at the Kimball Hill Fire Pit. We do want to also mention that happy upcoming retirements of Ruth Wagner at the Rolling Meadows Library and City Planning Reviewer and Inspection Supervisor Keith Anderson, both retire on Friday, June fourth. Obviously, going back to the June committee items, we do want to make sure that people know that the Economic Development Committee will be meeting on Monday, June seventh, at six P M. here in the council chambers at City Hall. Tentative items to be discussed consist of a new business feedback and contact, the six B requests potentially from fifty-three hundred Newport, Chamber Co-op presentation, the new individual will be here to talk about that co-op. The twenty twenty one goal discussions will continue. There's a business advocate update and other items of interest for the city. On Tuesday, June first, right after Memorial Day weekend, the Planning and Zoning Commission will be meeting. There are three tentative items at this meeting, and they are, one, a public hearing in consideration of a tax amendment to add outdoor storage as allowed special use in the M one and M two zoning district of section one twenty-two, three, three, one of the zoning code. And this is from the City of Rolling Meadows is the petitioner. This was continued from the May fourth meeting. Another item that is in there is a public hearing consideration for special use pursuant to section one-two-two dash three oh one, section three of the City of Rolling Meadows zoning code of ordinances to allow outdoor storage of accompanying vehicles and other relief necessary to accommodate the outdoor storage in the M one zoning district. Thirty-eight thirty-five Industrial Air Avenue, Scott Arnett of Spring Green is the petitioner with permission of the property owner of Mike Maloney and Limon Peterson. They are the owners. This was also continued from the May fourth meeting. There will also be a workshop regarding tax amendments that would be authorizing digital signs for non-residential use in residential districts. This is also part of a discussion that we've had with a local church that is potentially looking at potentially putting in a new digital sign instead of their static sign, but it's a discussion that needs to be had because who knows if this is just the first one that we're having or additional items will be coming up. Obviously, those are items of interest that we have for the end of this meeting, May twenty fifth, and we will obviously be back in June.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock. That'll bring us to the second item of the city staff reports, which is April twenty twenty one financials. For this, we will defer to Finance Director Gallagher. Ms. Gallagher, when you're ready, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. In the council packet is the fiscal year twenty twenty one financial report for results of operations as of April thirtieth, twenty twenty one. As a reminder, the city's auditors are completing the draft of the city's F Y twenty twenty audit, and the twenty twenty audit will be presented at the June fifteenth committee, the whole meeting. In addition to that, the city's actuary will also be presenting information for the city's fire and police pension funds. So for this report tonight through April thirtieth, twenty twenty one, it is not intended to be a financial estimate. However, it does provide a review of the city's revenues and expenditures in the results of operations as of April thirtieth, twenty twenty one. As a reminder, the city does maintain fifteen separate funds accounting for different types of activities. On page three of this report, you will see the different types of funds in the memo. And most of the report does focus on the general fund since it is the largest operating fund for the city. Each fund is budgeted through the budget process and are separate from each other, while the city does not budget, looking at all the, the city does budget, looking at all the funds as a whole. But at the end of the day, each fund is a self-balancing account, and it's important to remember that. Turning to the memo, the memo does highlight several items, and I wanted to review the memo through April thirtieth. For results of operations through April thirtieth, general fund revenues are coming in at fifteen point six million dollars or forty-five point nine percent of the twenty twenty one budget. It should be noted, following past fiscal years, the city received approximately fifty percent of the property tax levy. It's about where we should be for April. Property taxes make up more than a third of the general fund revenue and continue to be a reliable and stable source for the city of revenue. Highlighted in some of the weekly notes that we've sent out, real estate transfers are taking place at a very fast pace. Both residential and commercial are definitely changing hands. We've had some larger one-time revenues over the last few years, and this trend continues for twenty twenty one. Turning to general fund expenditures, expenditures are coming in at twelve point seven million dollars year-to-date or thirty-five point eight percent for the twenty twenty one budget. The year-to-date surplus for the general fund is two point nine million dollars, which is primarily due to the first installment of the property taxes and the budgeted transfers in for the year. However, when we exclude those two items, the city's revenues are at thirty-five percent of the year, or about two percent better than the monthly target of thirty-three percent. So bottom line is that the general fund is doing a little bit better than the budget. This report does show a variety of data for your review. On page two, the budgeted transfers for twenty twenty one. On page four of the report, we show the year-to-date general fund expenditures by type, and a couple charts are within there. On page five, we have the Illinois Department of Employment Security unemployment data, which as of March twenty twenty one is seven point seven percent. On page six of the report, we have the cash position as of April thirtieth, which shows thirty million dollars across all funds with the largest share in the general fund at thirty-six percent. The general fund's income statement does start on page seven through page ten, which has a lot of detailed notes and line item data for your review. On page eleven, the all funds income statement shows revenues and expenditures through April thirtieth for all of the city's funds. On page twelve, we have the city's summary of cash and investments. And lastly, on page thirteen, start the charts and graphs for general fund revenues and some of the highlighted items, which will kind of show you year-over-year the detailed items for some of the major revenues. When you turn to page fourteen, you'll see that look from twenty twenty one back to twenty fourteen, so you can kind of see some of the major revenues and how they have changed over time. There's no surprises here on a couple of items. We do see that state sales tax is particularly strong despite the COVID nineteen environment. In addition to that, we know that telecommunications tax has been declining. There's no surprise there. That continues. Electric utility tax, year-over-year, stable, a little bit lower than in previous years. That's primarily due to some of the commercial property vacancies due to COVID and remote working right now. Food and beverage tax, year-over-year, a little bit lower, again, as we see businesses opening up and the restrictions being lifted, we would see those revenues increase. Hotel tax, this is expected as well, that with one hotel offline right now, we would expect that. Real estate transfer, if you look at that, again, as we mentioned, we have some of the one-time revenues. Local use tax, which is interesting, again, the online sales are driving that increase. It's very interesting to look at. And then lastly, on page twenty-two, income tax, what's interesting about that is that we are actually showing a little bit of an uptick in income tax, most likely due to some of the COVID restrictions being lifted. And I think it really tells of our area too, that our community, but we do have unemployment in the area that folks are working remotely and are, we're seeing those receipts coming in from income tax. So this report does provide a high-level overview of the April thirtieth financials for twenty twenty one. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Gallagher, for sharing that information. This will bring us on to the next item, which is new businesses for the month of April. For this, Manager Crumstock, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, for the month of April, we had three new businesses. We'd like to highlight that Little Caesars is now a new owner, but it's still in the same location. And we also want to mention the last one that's on there. It's called Superior Lons, D B A, Spring Green. They're the ones that I just mentioned about the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that they're out for outdoor storage and some other items. With that, those are the three new businesses for the City of Rolling Meadows in April twenty twenty one.
Thank you for sharing the new businesses and the update there. Why don't we go ahead and pivot from new businesses to the draft agenda for the June eighth City Council meeting, Manager Crumstock?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, before you is a draft working document. There's already an addition to this, too. Obviously, we will have the second readings for the state of the emergency. We will also have for the school district two fourteen, the special use for thirty-five hundred Blue Bird Lane that did receive unanimous approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Obviously, we will have a new pandemic nineteen ordinance that's up for first reading. We will also have from the committee of the hall meetings, we will have the two taxation items. One ordinance dealing with the new restaurant incentive for twenty twenty one and for five years. And then the second ordinance that would be up, it would be regarding a retail sales tax initiative, and that will be first reading for all three of those ordinances. Pay some bills, and we'll be back for a resolution to award a contract for the twenty twenty one Community Development Block Grant Construction Observation, and this regarding Arbor Drive Phase Two, which we did open up the bids today. And then obviously, there's a resolution to award the construction contract for that project on Arbor Drive Phase Two. We will also do a resolution for award a contract for utility locate services. Obviously, currently, the City of Rolling Meadows, we do a bunch of our own locates, but obviously, with Julie Locates, they're getting a little bit big. If you know of U S I C., they are actually in the community doing locates for other groups. We're trying to award a contract for them to actually do the city parts, too, so there's some economy of scales. There's also some working for that point, too. The new addition, well, there will be at least one appointment for the planning and zoning at this meeting, and then we'll have community items of interest, traffic review committee report from May. And then we will have the two next items for June. So we will have the June fifteenth Committee of Home Meeting, which is pretty booked, as you heard, especially with the auditors and the actuarials be here. And then the final meeting for June, for June twenty second, the draft agenda will be at that point in time. We will also be recessing to the Committee of the Hall, and then we will be in a Committee of the Hall for the city attorney to do the elected officials training. This was what was postponed from the Committee of the Hall meeting. Following that training, we will reconvene the city council, and then we will go to matters not on the agenda. If there's a need for a call session, we would add it then, and then adjournment at that point in time. Just for clarification for people hearing my voice or know what's going on, in our code, we have a reserve section, and that's the reserve section that we're actually using for, if you want to call it a one-off, but a one-time, that we're not doing this, so it's not repetitive, to do the recess to the Committee of the Hall, doing the one discussion item, and then reconvening to the city council meeting at that point in time. So June eighth will have a little different feel, but at the same point in time, we are using a reserve section of our code to actually allow us to do that section. With that, that is the June eighth scheduled draft twenty twenty one meeting.
Thank you for providing a little window into what we can expect on June eighth. Moving on to the fifth item here, it's the Public Works Summer Contest flyer. And for this, I'm going to ask Director Horn to take the floor and shed a little light on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Finally, a fun item to talk about. So as part of our Public Works Week last week, we decided to challenge our City of Rolling Meadows residents and students and provide them with an art contest over the summer. The theme for Public Works Week was being stronger together, and so we want to challenge our students and residents between the ages of one and eighteen to submit their best representation of what it means for Rolling Meadows Public Works to be stronger together. We have provided at the city's website, our Facebook page, a two templates, one landscape view and one portrait view for our artists to use and submit their entries to the city. We will take those entries at Public Works, thirty-nine hundred Burnick Street, or by email on the email address attached, which is revardr@cityrm.org. We'll be taking those until July twenty-sixth. We will contact the two winners. We will have two winners, one from ages twelve and below and one winner from ages thirteen to eighteen. We will announce those winners and on August ninth, and we will also present them with a little recognition at one of the following committee council meetings. One of the neat things we are going to do is, for those artists that win the contest, we will have their drawing replicated on a banner, and that banner will be flown at the Public Works facility and will be displayed at select city events the following year. So we are hoping to make this an annual event, so we hope many people So we are hoping to make this an annual event, so we hope many people participate. If you need further information, please call Public Works, and we'll be happy to answer it. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Horn, for sharing that information. Appreciate that. That now concludes the section for city staff reports and brings us to matters not on the agenda. Earlier at the beginning of tonight's meeting with award reports, Alderman Budmets, I'd like to circle back to you so you can pose those questions again, one about Chase Bank and then the other about the yellow lines, so we can get some feedback from staff, and you can provide direction, feedback to your residents if you would continue that conversation here, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, if somebody from staff who's been able to contact Chase and maybe even if they're talked to our representative at Chase, just to find out the rationale behind closing this branch and what can be done to extending our relationship, whether it's at that location or a new location within Rolling Meadows, if somebody could report to us from staff, that would be awesome. And then, and then the second item would be for the traffic committee to consider the area just west of the intersection of Kirchhoff and Hicks Road, where residents or guests to Brookwood Drive would be turning left and going south into the, to the northern driveway of the Brookwood condominiums. It seems to cause traffic issues and near misses, et cetera, and so, because it's so close to the intersection. So if the traffic committee could look at that and give us a report, or maybe they've already done so, and I'm just not aware of it. So that's, those are the two items. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Director Horn, I did see your hand come up. I was going to ask you if it didn't come up, if you had any insight for us tonight. Go ahead.
I don't have any insight other than the fact that I know the area Alderman Budmets is speaking to. I have a clear understanding of what he's looking for, so we will add that to our traffic review committee agenda, and we will review those aerials and those traffic patterns to see what, what solutions could be provided for that issue.
Okay, great, thank you. And then Manager Crumstock, I see your hand popped up.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to address, obviously, giving a little more feedback to what we know. So just like many of the customers of Chase Bank, the City of Rolling Meadows received a letter, same day that everybody seemed to be getting it. We reached out to our current representative from Chase Bank, because that is the bank that the City of Rolling Meadows currently utilizes. He did not know what was going on. He didn't even know that one of our branches was going to be closed down. Obviously, there are some other branches in the area and Chase overall that are doing some closing. We did reach out to the property owners of the property who just recently purchased the Chase Bank, actually where they put it. They are not aware of anything. We were sort of their wake-up call, if you want to call it, at that point in time. So we're still in communication with them. They're not really that interested. They're not really looking for it. This is a business decision that they've made, but we continue discussing with them. And just for transparency, obviously, in the beginning of this year, because Finance Director, Director Melissa Gallagher and I have already had some of those conversations with what happens in 2022. We're actually in conversations with 2023 and 2024, but next year would actually have been already our banking RFP that we would be sending out, and that's still the plan. Just for transparency, again, roughly nine years ago, the City of Rolling Meadows was out for RFP, and we moved from BMO Harris to Chase Bank. We've had a long relationship, obviously, with Chase Bank. Some of their services are not exactly the same as when we signed up with them, definitely with their customer service item, but when we do go out in 2022, that's part of what we need to look at. Chase Bank does our lockbox. They do a lot more services. Majority of our funds for the City of Rolling Meadows are at Chase Bank. It does take a little bit of time if we do make a move, but we had already scheduled working on the RFP, and we are really watching what some other municipalities have done. When trust is out there, BMO is out there, Fifth Third is out there, and even Chase has also been winning some municipal clients, too. So we are still watching it. We still have some other discussions that are open, but at this point in time, that's the best summary that I can give with everything that's going on.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock. Alderman Budmets, does that assist you in any future conversation or dialogue or feedback on Chase?
Sure. I mean, it sounds like if it's a done deal, I guess it's a done deal. It's just a disappointment, especially if the, even if the owners of the property had no idea. So it doesn't sound like there's a solution already for filling that space, for sure. So whatever our, our representative at Chase can tell us or give us any further insight, that would be great. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Veneziano, just circling back to your conversation and comments about Kirchhoff Road and the accidents that we are aware of from the course of the past two weeks or so, do you have more insight, or is it time for Chief Nowacki?
No, I'll, I'll let Chief Nowacki kind of take over. He has more information than I do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chief, if you have an opportunity here to share a little bit of insight and feedback that we can convey to our residents now is the appreciated time.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, City Council. I just want to first start off with saying I definitely understand the concern of the residents that live on Kirchhoff or around that area. As you mentioned, we did have two significant crashes in about the last month. One did involve a rollover vehicle that was traveling at extremely high rate of speed, and the motorist was also operating the vehicle under the influence of alcohol. We did arrest that individual, and there is a pending court case. We did also have a rollover by the jewel that involved a motorist who had dropped an item, tried to retrieve it, and veered off the road, and the car rolled over. That, we don't believe, involved any high rate of speed. However, like I said, we do take the concerns of the residents very seriously. I have been doing daily assignments on Kirchhoff, and just this month, we had issued over 100 citations for various violations, some speeding, some other violations. Actually, just a couple hours ago, we did arrest a motorist for traveling over 70 miles an hour on Kirchhoff. So we've been very active, and we will continue to do so. We will be doing, as I think mentioned at a previous City Council meeting, we will be doing some speed studies over there. I'm waiting for a, some support posts to be installed, so I can put the equipment up. So once I do that, I have a later report to the city council regarding my findings. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you for sharing some of that insight. It's a very dangerous situation. I know from, from my children right now, you know, summer is approaching, the end of the school year is this week for District 15 elementary level, kindergarten through eighth grade, basically. So I know there'll be more kids out at play, and we want to make sure that they are safe when they're crossing roads, especially Kirchhoff Road. So I appreciate you sharing that information and stepping up enforcement of our speed policies. Are there any other matters not on the agenda from any other members of the council? Okay, if not, then this is the time where we note there is a request to go into closed session for personnel under 5 ILCS 120/2C1 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. It does require a motion, a second, and a roll call vote. Do I have a motion to go into closed session? Thank you, Alderman Budmets, and thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Is there any discussion ongoing in the closed session? Alderman Budmets?
I'll be voting against going into closed session. We received the information for the closed session very late, and I haven't had time to adequately review it. So, so that we can have a fruitful session, I'd like to, I'd like to hold off until the time when, when we've had enough time to review it properly.
Okay, thank you for sharing that information. Alderman Bessetti?
I actually saw that we did just get it. To me, it appears more of an update, so I'm glad we probably just go into closed session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion on entering into closed session? All right, Alderman Bessetti, I'm just going to lower your hand then, real quick, and if there's no further discussion, the question is, will we engage in entering into closed session? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Veneziano?
No.
Bessetti?
Yes.
Reyes? I didn't hear that. Can you say it again?
No.
Okay. Sanoka?
No.
Mikail?
No.
Budmets?
No.
O'Brien?
Yes.
With two in favor and five opposed, we will not enter into closed session. Therefore, audience press and members of the council be advised that the next portion of this meeting is to adjourn, and so at this time, I would look for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Alderman Veneziano, and thank you for the second. Alderman Budmets, any discussion on adjourning? Sorry?
No.
Okay, then will the clerk please call the roll?
Bessetti?
You didn't come through.
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoka?
Yes.
Mikail?
Yes.
Budmets?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Seven in favor and then opposed, we will adjourn. Everybody have a wonderful evening, and we'll talk to you soon. Good night. Good night.